Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video concludes the second and final part of the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's Public Hearing by Carl Stanley. And continuing from where the previous video left off, we head into an email exchange between Mr. Stanley and Stockton Rush, showing the back and forth between the two and the concerns Mr. Stanley had and raised. And in turn, we also see some of Stockton Rush's responses to these. There is also further discussion about Mr. Stanley's dive in Titan in 2019 and how he feels key information was not shared with him both during and after that dive. This then leads into a pretty damning description of Stockton Rush and Ocean Gate, one similar in its disdain to that in the testimony of David Lockridge. But I won't go into further detail on that right now. Instead, let's just get started and pick up where we left off, and I'll be back again at the end of the video to speak in more length. So, thank you as ever for clicking on this video. It is greatly appreciated. Now, let's hear that second and final part of Carl Stanley's testimony.
This hearing is now back in session. Mr. Fawcett, please continue.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to draw your attention back to Exhibit 084, and there are certain passages I will ask you about. There was, the first email is April 18, 2023, and you say, and you can pull that up, Lieutenant.
Objection, 2019, I believe.
2019, pardon me. Thank you. The quality of work I did for you in Washington was excellent, and you enjoyed reading my exchange with Bruce Jones. And what was the work you conducted for Mr. Rush in Washington?
That was working on the first launch platform.
So you're talking about the launch, the first launch platform which would have been used for which, which submersible?
Probably Cyclops 1.
And then, Mr. Jones?
That was a former partner at Trident.
And then, reading down into that email, it would be, it's highlighted there, that portion, you say, "The sounds we observed yesterday do not seem consistent with glue joints breaking, air cavities breaking, or random weak fiber breaking. What we heard in my opinion," and I think after the discussion Joel and I had last night, I can say he shares this opinion, "sounded like a flaw, defect in one area being acted on by the tremendous pressures and being crushed, damaged. From the intensity of the sound, the fact that they were never totally stopped at depth, and the fact that there were sounds at about 300 feet that indicated a relaxing of stored energy would indicate there is an area of the hull that is breaking down, getting spongy." So you had mentioned you had thought you had identified a specific area of the hull where the sounds emanated from. Is that what you're speaking about here?
Correct.
And what area of the hull would that be?
I remember it being low and towards the flange.
And is the flange where the carbon fiber hull has mated to the titanium rings?
Yes.
At the time, you made your dive, what was the interior of the submarine? Was there a liner that prevented a person?
There was. You couldn't see the hull directly.
Was it the forward dome, the forward being where the observation port was, or was it the after dome?
I think towards the observation dome, but I can't remember, I can't remember for sure.
So Mr. Rush replied to you, and that would be on May 23, 2019, and we've highlighted that.
Yeah. We had discussions after, in person, when I...
Hang on just one second. Can you scroll down to, it starts, "Yes, we are shooting for," it's up on the screen now, sir.
Okay.
So he says, "Yes, we are shooting for a few more, as many as five, 4,000," I'm assuming that means dives to get added acoustic data and operational experience, especially charging at sea and back to daily dives.
Objection. Mr. Fawcett, is this email a response to the other one? Because it seems just the first phrase we just read seems like an answer to a question that was not, "Yes, we're shooting." I'm just, I know these are excerpts, but it's not clear to me that this is a continuous conversation, so I just want to make that clear.
Do you know if you received emails between the email we just discussed in April and this date?
This is the complete email chain, but I don't know what day I left the Bahamas, but I know I was still in the Bahamas, staying in the same house, when he got the first email from me. And I remember there being like a large meeting with maybe 20 people, and when there was a chance, he kind of signaled, signaled to me that we were going to talk privately about what I had emailed. We, we had conversations about the content of the first email before he gave me this written response.
So this is your first written response to your original email?
Correct.
"Our analysis of the past dive shows a definite reduction in acoustic events, but only having data from two full operating depths dives," pardon me, "does not make for much validating trend, much of a validating trend." Did that response related to your experience as a submersible pilot and your experience on a dive concern you?
I mean, obviously, I was very much concerned that I kept sending him emails for over a year, and I didn't even know a fraction of what we know now.
Objection. When we're saying over a year, I believe these emails are a couple, a month apart. I'm just, is there a different set of emails we're talking about that's over a course of one year?
There are eight pages of them.
Yeah, they're all from May through June 2019, at least every single one in this exhibit.
Oh, okay.
So just to clarify, these emails are from between the dates of April and June of 2019, not over the course of the year unless there are additional emails that we do not have here.
My bad, I still thought 2018 for some reason.
Okay. So we, for the record, we have about three months of email exchange.
Correct. That's all we have, sir. And they're here in this exhibit, redacted.
Okay. So, Mr. Stanley, can we, can you keep the testimony, at least when we're directly quoting the emails to these, to this series? Thank you, sir.
So on May 27, 2019, you sent an email to Mr. Rush, and if you'll scroll down, so you said your last email, and you talked about some different, "The Smithsonian article in Ocean Gate latest press release has given me plenty to think about, a few thoughts I wanted to share with you." So the first thought, paragraph A, was "Two to seven dives to operating depth are too few to launch an expedition selling six-figure tickets in the middle of the ocean." I think 50 is good at, and what would that symbol represent?
A good number.
So how many dives I had in Seabug before taking customers, and it's the...
Number of skydives?
You need for a B license, which allows you to go out at night, land on water, try a wingsuit, et cetera. The second bullet, Bravo thinks, "I think the hull has a defect near the flange that will only get worse. The only question in my mind is if it will fail catastrophically." Were you aware that carbon fiber, when it did fail, would fail catastrophically as opposed to just a gradual weakening of the carbon fiber hull?
I don't know that enough, you know, even in the hull that failed, from all the acoustic emission charts we have seen, it did give him warning. He was just ignoring the warnings. So I would, I would argue it wasn't a, I mean, obviously, it was a catastrophic failure, but it's not like glass. It gave him warning. He just chose to ignore it.
But I'm speaking of at the time that you wrote this, did you understand that carbon fiber could fail catastrophically?
Any failure of a pressure hull is catastrophic.
And then finally, you say in paragraph C, "The fact that you indirectly told me not to speak about the noises I heard on the dive to me says a lot. As you know, my subs have had many issues and incidents over the years. At no point did I find it necessary to tell anyone not to speak of what I saw or heard. I have told journalists openly about my most exciting subsea moments. I feel my customers make 100%, informed consent, or at least have access to all the information to do so if they choose to do the research." So what do you, when you were speaking about your particular experience, what were you speaking about from your, your moments?
Well, I've had, you know, a very long career, over 26, 27 years, 28 years of operating submersibles with cumulatively, and a few more dives, albeit 2,400 dives, more than half of those are to 2,000 feet in the four-hour range. I've done dives up to 24 hours, and I'm operating without surface support in a offshore, essentially, even though it's, it's close to my, it's, it's my front yard, but it's still the open ocean. There was one time with the, you, you want me to list the incidents I've had?
Well, give me, give me an example, if you would.
One time, so Seabug, I had to get towed in and out because the motors were only added after the fact, and they were right on the waterline, so they didn't give you enough power. They sucked a lot of air, decavitated, and you, you had to get towed in and out. And there was one time, the boat that towed me out, where I'm operating, as you saw the charts, it's an immediate drop-off. It's on the edge of the Cayman Trench. And my passenger took essentially too long to get in, and the wind was blowing us towards the reef. And by the time we were both in and I sealed the hatch and I descended, it was already too shallow, and I had the surface, the boat had already left, and there were probably four or five-foot waves, and the vehicle got washed up on the shore, which, where I live is ancient coral, Iron Shore. And nobody was injured. One of the drop weights on the bottom of the sub was ripped off, and my passenger and I actually carried it together back to the resort I was operating out of at the time, and I had to do repairs on the sub.
Did you tell the passenger not to speak about that incident?
No.
And have you spoken about that incident prior to June 18, 2023, to Mr. Rush or anybody else?
I, you know, with, there was a resort full of people. It wasn't being tried to keep any kind of secret, but I'm not, the, you know, if anything, I'm too candid with journalists. I mean, I've talked about any kind of incidents I've had in a whole bunch of different magazine articles and things over the years. It's all a matter of public record.
And would that have been before the June 18, 2023?
Yeah.
So you sent an email to Mr. Rush, which is the next page, on June 2, 2019. The highlighted portion, throughout these hearings, we've talked about the experimental nature of the Titan. There's been testimony about the fact that it was experimental. So in this, he's giving you an example. The more relevant example would be the FAA requires only 25 hours of flight testing before passengers are taken in an experimental aircraft. Only one of these flights needs to be to a maximum dynamic pressure, the aviation equivalent of, I'm assuming that's maximum operating depth, but I, I'm not sure.
I would assume so.
"The required hours can be logged in 10 flights or fewer, and this holds true for my composite airplane and others that use novel structures, material, and configurations." So my following questions relate to the term "experimental" and your knowledge of experimental because you're engaging in this give and take. So the, the Federal Aviation Administration is the government agency that oversees flight aviation, and in the case of the Coast Guard, we oversee the maritime transportation system. So the FAA, under U.S. Code CFR 14 CFR 91.319, says that aircraft having experimental certificates operating limitations. The purpose, "Experimental aircraft can only be used for the purpose for which they were issued, such as education and personal, or personal use." Were you aware of that?
I have not been involved in small aircraft that much. My experience was getting my B license skydiving, and that's what I was comparing his operating experience to, and I compared it to how much experience I felt personally was required to be comfortable with taking passengers with both of my vehicles. I would also note that I was in a meeting, I think, I don't recall if Rush was there or not, but it was in the, the meeting in New Orleans of the underwater intervention, and there was basically a special meeting because of what Ocean Gate was doing. And they were looking for some way, discussing some way to try to stop them, and I remember it was only Graham Hawkes was there and myself, and we're the only ones that were kind of sticking up for Ocean Gate in any way. And I said, "Maybe since we all understand carbon fiber would be exceedingly an expensive, lengthy, basically almost impossible process for, you know, non-state actor to accomplish." For example, the book that's been referenced multiple times, first by Neeson, Jerry Harris Saywich's, or Jerry Statue's book on acrylics. It's like this thick. At the time, acrylic was a brand-new material, and everybody realized it was going to be a valuable thing for viewports, but they needed to figure out what the rules would be. The Navy paid one person to essentially dedicate their life to figuring that out. And acrylics are fairly easy material to work with. It's, it's homogeneous as a material, you know, it doesn't have hidden pockets or anything like how composites can have. So the amount of research and development that would really have to go into making a carbon fiber submersible that could be used and certified to those depths, you know, you're talking tens of millions of dollars in a decade or two at least of somebody's life.
Let me stop you there because I was talking about the, the term "experimental" for aviation as a comparison to the marine model. So, and for clarification, that meeting in New Orleans of the industry experts, do you recall what year that was?
No. But the point I was trying to make with that is, I proposed in that room, maybe we can all just agree to insist that he at least gets 50 dives under his belt, and that's going to mitigate a lot of this risk. And Graham Hawkes was like, "Yes, I think that's a good number," because he's also had issues getting composite vehicles. He ended up finally getting them certified, I believe, but it was a lengthy process and only for about 100 meters. You know, had he done that, if he had done just 50 dives to operating depth, none of this would have happened.
So that meeting that was part of the New Orleans conference, was that on the printed agenda so I could research that meeting and see that that meeting was part of that conference or symposium?
Most likely, yes. Will Cohen would have been the organizer, and I, he's testifying tomorrow. He would probably know.
So, under the same discussion of experimental for the Federal Aviation Administration's rules, they say compensation. Did you know that the experimental aircraft can be used to carry people or property for compensation or higher?
That sounds vaguely familiar, but again, I'm not that familiar with experimental aircraft.
It further states it must be inspected by a certified repairman designated for light sport aircraft with a maintenance rating. Would you know that?
I've never heard that, but that sounds like a good rule.
Objection. Does, does Mr. Stanley have any basis to answer these questions?
Yeah, Mr. Fawcett, he already said that he's not familiar with the experimental aircraft rules.
So moving on, later in your email, you respond to Mr. Rush's comments regarding the FAA experimental aircraft, and you say on June 2...
I, I would just like to note that even his own cited numbers for experimental aircraft numbers in terms of hours are, he, he wasn't even meeting those.
But, Mr. Stanley, I thought you said you weren't familiar with the experimental aircraft.
Well, from what Stockton said in his email.
Okay.
His own criteria that he picked, he didn't even meet.
Then the basis for saying that is?
Are you saying he provided a number that was not met in his own email?
It was in the last slide. 25 hours of flight, he didn't have 25 hours in Titan before he was willing to take passengers.
And what is the basis for that statement?
Yes, sir, I don't know that you can say that.
Okay.
Did you have any subsequent conversations with Mr. Rush or anyone at Ocean Gate after this email chain regarding the safety of operations at Ocean Gate for Triton, for Titan, excuse me?
In terms of the ideas expressed in the emails, I didn't feel it was my business to kind of undermine his standing within the company. I did have some brief conversation with the, the fourth passenger, his friend, and he was visibly shaken after that dive, and to my recollection, ugh, recollection, left the, basically quit within a few days after that.
And who was that?
I said his name before, it's escaping me right now.
So on the June 3, in...
Objection, Mr. Fawcett, before we move off, we're moving off these emails, I just wanted to clarify that this is not a complete chain, and in fact, there was an email from Mr. Rush to Mr. Stanley, to which that May 23 email was a response to. I don't know where, but these are, just for the record, this is not a complete email exchange, and we can provide the complete email exchange that includes emails that were omitted from these excerpts.
Okay, thank you, Ocean Gate. We, if you can find the additional emails, we will redo the exhibit and add those redacted versions.
Thank you.
Yes, we, we weren't aware of that, sir. In...
Well, wouldn't I be the one to have those emails?
That was going to be my question.
So what makes you think that they're missing emails here?
Because we have the full email chain, and they're missing emails there.
How do you know an email's missing?
One second, please. I, I think that Ocean Gate, you have the other side of the email chain.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, if you would just provide those to the board, you know, we will make that the exhibit.
We will.
So on June 3 of 2019, it's the last two pages of the email chain that we do have as Exhibit, as the Exhibit 85. You sent an email to Mr. Rush.
This is page what out of eight?
It's the second to the last page.
Okay.
Where it says, we're scrolling down to it. Yeah, so it's, it starts, "Your statement that you will not take nonessential crew, clients, media, or clients or media in the sub until you are confident the hull is safe," to me is sort of a red flag. "The definition of safe is free from risk," and then you have a link there to what appears to be a dictionary. "Obviously, and as evidenced by your waiver, the endeavor you wish to undertake is full of risk." What we are talking about here is the risk management and what is an acceptable level of risk. So you included that in your response, and you felt, am I correct, that the idea that, the idea that, that there was a confidence in the submersible that it was safe because ultimately, he did take personnel into it?
Mm-hmm.
So you, so you were saying that based on your, your knowledge of what risk was, as you define here, that the submarine was not safe?
Objection. Could we just ask, rephrase the question?
I think we need to rephrase that question. Sir, what did you mean by that?
I mean, I was advising him to gain more experience to mitigate risk.
Thank you. I'm getting to my final questions here. So how did you become aware of the accident? Now we're talking about the accident that occurred on June 18, 2023?
Yeah. I had been camping for a couple weeks off-grid in the jungle in the mainland of Honduras, and the day I got out was the day the sub went missing.
And did anyone contact you for assistance once the accident had occurred?
No, but, you know, people within the community, we were all calling each other, and even without the information that James Cameron had access to with the, the sound, I was able to, I was 100% sure that they had imploded. I said that to a journalist, actually, from Harper's, but I didn't want to go on the record as such until the family found out another way. But the only way that you would lose both your tracking and communication and not be on the bottom would be an implosion.
Sir, that's my final question. This time, Lieutenant Commander Whalen has questions for you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. What was the testing process for the Idabel? You had mentioned you were testing it in the lake that was near Idabel.
So before, you know, you got to go back up to engineering, really, which I did myself too. First, I looked at as many, so my sub is essentially a combination of spheres and of known materials, and you're able to extrapolate from other vehicles of a similar diameter and thickness and the strength of material and get a real good idea of the strength of your individual spheres like that. Then I collaborated that data with using a program called Under Pressure from the company Deep Sea Power and Light, which made most of the lights that are on my sub, made, most of the subs in the world are using their lights, and they've been around forever. They know what they're doing. So they got this program, and then I made scale models, and I brought them out to California and tested them in Doug Privet's pressure chamber. I made three models. One of them went the equivalent of close to 4,000 feet and failed, and the two others went over 4,400 feet, and the pressure chamber actually started to deform, and that's where we ended the tests.
And were these one-third scale models a direct representation of the full scale?
They were in one-third. They were based on six-inch spheres. But they were, and I also made a point of using weaker steel and not taking great care in my welts so that any variable would be erring towards the side of caution.
And is that how you determine the rated depth?
Well, originally, I was planning on having an operating depth of 3,000 feet, but for many years, I kept it to 2,000 feet. And then, as I made more money in operations, I paid an engineering firm to do finite element analysis on it, and they gave me a number of 2,700 feet. And that was actually with a film crew in their face, and they were obviously not wanting to, they were cautious because had anything gone wrong, here they are in front of a camera telling me 2,700 feet was a good depth to take this to. And then, I had an engineer working for me for a couple of years, and he also ran his own finite element analysis on my hull and came up with the exact same numbers. And so, I take 2,700 feet as a safe limit. I've been to 2,660. I've slept at 2,500 feet numerous times, and I don't take my passengers below 2,000.
And the materials that you used for the Idabel, were they approved, the materials within ABS class standards?
Yes.
At the dive in the Bahamas on the 17th of April, 2019, was there a, were you aware of a representative from, from Lloyd's Register, any kind of attendance?
I, I don't believe that there was one there.
Lieutenant Steele, can you please bring up Exhibit number 52, which is the dive log for the Titan submersible? So the first dive for the original Titan hull was conducted on or about the 6th of February in 2018 to a max depth of three meters. And if you could please scroll... And if you could please scroll slowly through the max depths. And so, on dive 26, which is C2 underscore 0026, on the 26th of June 2018, was an unmanned dive to 4,000 meters.
Joel Perry, that would have been the guy's name.
Thank you. Please stop. In the far-left column, C2 underscore 0039, on the 10th of December 2018, was to 3,939 meters, and that was the solo dive with Mr. Stockton Rush. And if you could please scroll to dive number 47? And this was the dive that you partook in on the 17th of April 2019 to 3,760 meters. Mr. Stanley, were you made aware that you were one of the first crew, other than Mr. Rush, to be in the submersible to a depth of 3,000, over 3,000 meters?
Yeah, and I'm actually surprised even to see all the dives before this. He really wasn't transparent with that kind of information. I also was extremely curious about if my theory on the hull breaking down in the one area was correct or not, and asked him specifically multiple times to share information or images of the area with the defect, when I learned that he had scrapped the hull, and he told me that he had, actually, I don't even think he told me, I think Mike Claudel told me. So, I heard through a third source, but he never, he wouldn't share that information with me.
And as we saw in the previous exhibit that Mr. Fawcett had up regarding your emails, at any point within those emails, were you made aware that a crack was identified in the hull at the, according to the maintenance log, it was on the 29th of May 2019?
I learned about the crack from Wired magazine.
And what Wired, was there a specific Wired magazine article that you heard from?
One of the more recent ones.
Okay. So, after the?
Quite recently.
Quite recently. Had you planned any more dives or any more operations with Mr. Rush after the, after your dive on the 17th of April 2019?
It was never discussed, I didn't really have an interest in going to the Titanic, I didn't, you know, I feel also this exchange of emails strained our relationship from what it had been previously. We weren't, I felt like I kind of pushed things as far as I could without just him telling me to shut up and never talk to him again.
Were you ever a member of the MTS or the?
On and off, I have been, yeah.
Were you involved in the drafting of the letter?
They didn't ask me to sign it, but I was aware of it.
Thank you, sir. That's all the questions I have for now.
Mr. Stanley, at this time, I'm going to go to the National Transportation Safety Board for questions. Mr. Muse?
Good afternoon, Mr. Stanley. Did Mr. Rush discuss at all how he was going to get Titan and the Lars to the Titanic site, like on the back of a supply boat with a ramp, or was it going to be craned overboard or towed out there?
We weren't staying in that close contact in the last couple of years. The, most of the information I was getting was from Mike, who now has Antipodes, and he had been on one of the expeditions, he'd actually been bunkmates with PH on one trip, and he was staying much closer with Stockton.
But, in this timeframe, we've been talking about 2019, you weren't aware, or they didn't share what their plans was on?
We weren't talking like that.
Okay. And my only other question is, where is Seabug now?
I scuttled it in the middle of the bay, and it's like an artificial reef, probably has a six-foot green moor eel in it right now.
All right, thank you for your time today.
Mr. Stanley, just have a couple of follow-ups from the initial questions. For the Idabel, did you ever get that classed?
No.
But you did build it to classification standards?
It, so, for one thing, the, that window would need to be replaced every 20 years, and you're talking $30,000, $40,000. So, Idabel, I didn't keep track as carefully of every penny like I did with Seabug, but approximately, I had that diving for $100,000. I did all my own welding, the majority of my own machining, my own initial engineering, and, you know, I was sleeping either in a hammock or in my car for the year and a half when I was working on it. It was on a very tight budget. And certification, they, you know, it's great if you're a billionaire or a cruise line or you're running a big ship where the cost of certification probably isn't even one tank of gas on your ocean liner. But, their business model is essentially, they're charging by the hour, and they let you know when they're done. They don't even quote you a price upfront. And the longer the process draws out, and the more complicated it is, the more money they're making. And that simply, it would have easily doubled or tripled the cost of the initial construction of Idabel. Yeah.
And sir, I think you mentioned that when you were aware of the letter of concern that the MTS was drafting, that you had some sympathy for the position of trying to get a new carbon, a new carbon fiber hull certified or, you know?
There's a company in Rhode Island that's making pressure vessels, not for human occupancy, but for 6,000 meters, and they have it more or less worked out. And from what I've read and from talking to other people, that gentleman reached out to Stockton Rush and wanted to confer with him, and Stockton refused his advice or even opportunity of meeting with him.
Objection, what's the basis?
That wasn't really my question, sir. I was going to ask you why the, why you felt the sympathy for, was it because you felt like a carbon fiber hull would take a long time to get certified correctly?
It would take a very long time.
Do you know how many years that would be, your timeframe?
I would say it would be more of an effort than what the Navy did for getting acrylic windows up to, you know, I mean, the book is that thick, and more money than Stockton had.
Are you familiar with international rules for submersibles?
No.
I think, at this time, I'd like to go to Ocean Gate Council for any questions.
Sure, thank you. Before the dive, Mr. Stanley, that you did on the Titan, on, I believe we had the date of April 17, 2019, do you recall Mr. Rush describing that as a home-built sub to you before you came to dive on it?
I don't recall.
Okay. And which date, so your dive was on April 17th, do you recall when you arrived and when you departed Bahamas for that?
I, I think I was there the better part of a week, but I, without searching flight records, I couldn't tell you exact dates.
Understood. And do you recall that between April 16th and April 18th, so including on the date of your dive, Mr. Nolan Thompson, a surveyor for Lloyd's Register, was present for the dive?
I don't recall meeting him.
The version of the Titan submersible that you dove on, on April 17th, do you know if that was the carbon fiber hull that was used on the Titanic expeditions?
To my knowledge, it was not.
Thank you.
Sir, just a couple more follow-up questions. You mentioned that you dove on the Antipodes in Punta Sound.
Correct.
Was there any compensation for that dive?
No.
Why do you think Mr. Rush provided that dive to you?
Fellow enthusiasts.
Why, sir?
That, you know, we both had a big interest in submersibles, and I don't remember the, who else was in the sub, and, I mean, they probably had some kind of other mission they were doing, and I just kind of went along with it, but I don't, you know, it was probably more than 10 years ago.
Sir, do you remember it was like a scientific mission that you were on?
I don't remember us doing any science. I remember being about 50 feet underwater and thinking we must have been hundreds because it was already so dark.
Sir, Lieutenant Commander Williams has a question for you.
Lieutenant Steele, could you bring up Exhibit 052, the maintenance log, and scroll to page nine, please? According to the, the maintenance log seen here on, it was discovered on May 29th that a crack was seen on inside of main pressure vessel at the 0900 clock position. Lieutenant Steele, could you now bring back up Exhibit 085, which is the email conversation, and scroll to page five? Mr. Stanley, we can see that it is on June 2nd that Stockton Rush sent this email to you. At the end of the second paragraph, it says, "Whether a localized acoustic activity we all heard is critical or merely characteristic is yet to be determined." I just wanted to confirm that there was no other communication between you and Stockton besides this email that occurred in June 2019? Or this email, these email chains?
Not that I can recall.
And so, just to confirm, he never told you about the crack of the hull at this time?
I found out about the crack from Wired magazine.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Stanley?
Can I ask just a quick follow-up? Mr. Stanley, do you know whether Mr. Rush knew of the, of the crack when those emails, when that email was sent? I assume not, since you learned from the Wired article, but I just wanted to confirm.
How would I know that?
Right, thank you.
So, it would be possible that he was not informed?
I find that highly unlikely.
Understand. Mr. Stanley, is there anything that we haven't asked you that you think would be valuable for the board to consider?
Yes. And I realize what I'm going to say kind of is, I expect objections from Ocean Gate's counsel, and I would wish that you would indulge me a few minutes to lay out what I think about this, seeing that Ocean Gate came very, very close to killing me and has had a severe impact on my business as well as an entire industry. And I think I could at least have a few minutes to spell out why I think this all happened and how it happened, because I've spent a great deal of time trying to figure that out and also researching it, and there's a lot of information online about Stockton and his family, and I think I have a pretty good theory about how this all connects.
Well, sir, I don't want to dig into information you may have seen on social media or online.
I mean, I'm talking about his father's obituary, things like that.
I'd rather not go into his, you know, father's obituary. Can you condense this into a theory that you have?
So, the definition of an accident is something that happened unexpectedly and by sheer chance. There was nothing unexpected about this. This was expected by everybody that had access to a little bit of information. And I think that if it wasn't an accident, it then has to be some, some degree of crime. And if it's a crime, I think to truly understand it, you need to understand the criminal's motive. And I think the entire reason this whole operation started was Stockton had a desire to leave his mark on history. He had, he was living in the shadow of 250 years of historically significant figures, and his father was extremely well-accomplished marine, big game hunter, president-elect of Bohemian Club, and the Bohemian Club plays a central role to this incident, because Stockton was allowed in, but only to provide entertainment. And his ego, he needed something to go.
Sir, I just want to stop you there, because I feel like this is information that you've gleaned that's outside the scope of my investigation, so.
It's central to understanding why.
I just, can you limit to your theory, you believe Stockton Rush was trying to make his mark in history? Is that the basis of this?
I mean, he had enough money to charter a sub and see the sub. He actually went on record at an interview in saying that the first trip to the Titanic, he didn't even bother looking out the window. This wasn't, and I don't think it was about making money the way that Guillermo said. Also, that entire business plan is completely bonkers. The industry of oil and gas and military completely moved to ROVs, like the one that you released the footage retrieving the wreckage. They don't need five-manned vehicles for those kind of applications. They've got this already figured out with remotely operated vehicles. Stockton's entire business plan made zero sense, but I think these wealthy individuals, probably from the Bohemian Club, probably on his board of directors, threw money at him, and he was painted into a corner, and I think lowering that thing on a fishing line, he was looking for an out. He probably hoped the fishing line broke. Why would you not even use a decent rope? And he, how, how do you tell all these people that invested, Guillermo gave me a number of $100 million of investment? How do you tell people their $100 million has gone and your business plan was a terrible idea and isn't working out? And I think that's why he kept diving, and he knew that eventually it was going to end like this, and he wasn't going to be held accountable, but he was going to be the most famous of all his famous relatives.
Thank you, sir. At this time, Mr. Stanley, you are released as a witness at this Marine Board investigation. Thank you for your assistance and cooperation with this investigation. If we need further information from you, we will contact you directly. And if you need further information from this board, you can contact our recorder, Lieutenant Kelly Steele. At this time, the hearing will adjourn for the day and reconvene at 8:30 tomorrow morning.
So, that concludes the testimony given by Cal Stanley. I think this was, and I don't just mean in the amount of videos, a testimony of two halves. On one hand, you have a slightly more reserved Mr. Stanley when questions center around his own operation and classification, things of that nature. I don't feel like he always gave a direct answer to some of the questions that were asked to him either. Sometimes, there were segues or mentions of achievements, whether they be whilst operating a sub or the way his company is ran. And it was not as if Mr. Stanley was hesitant to confirm he did not seek classification, but I did feel at certain points that his words were an attempt to lessen or perhaps skip that fact or maybe just veer away from it. But, as I said in the last video, I won't be digging into Mr. Stanley's own operation during this coverage of Ocean Gate's timeline, though it may make for an interesting future video. And having seen the second half of his testimony, it is clear now how angry he is at Ocean Gate, not only for the situation surrounding his dive in Titan, but also how their incompetence has shone more, maybe unwanted light, on his own company and negatively affected it as well as the industry as a whole. It's clear that Mr. Stanley's company could be considered a safer one than Ocean Gate's with shallower dives, the materials used for its subs, and an extensive list of completed dives. Still, it always goes back to classification and then also accepting paying passengers, which of course, Mr. Stanley had his reasons for. Again, though, I won't be deviating from Ocean Gate right now, but of course, would still love to hear what thoughts you all have on this. Due to the various segues and additional information that was given to questions that did not directly ask about those things, at certain points, this testimony did feel a little all over the place, but I do feel like we got to the bottom of a few things, at least in Mr. Stanley's own experience, such as a lack of transparency shown to him regarding the state of Titan's first hull after his dive, and also later, when that hull was scrapped, and then no information was shared by Ocean Gate despite Mr. Stanley's requests. Then, of course, there is the email exchange between Mr. Stanley and Stockton Rush, which filled a large section of this second half, and it was very insightful to hear about the noises that that first Titan hull was making from someone who was actually inside during those early dives in the Bahamas, noting in his email to Stockton Rush that the noises were not consistent with the breaking of glue joints, air cavities, or weak fibers. the noises were not consistent with the breaking of glue joints, air cavities, or weak fibers, but sounded more like a floor or defect. The sounds are also said to have continued once at depth, and further sounds were also heard at about 300 feet, which indicated a relaxing of stored energy. And this all leads, in this testimony, to a very damning account of Stockton Rush. Mr. Stanley recounts how he was basically told not to say anything about the noises Titan made, and how his advice to conduct more testing was basically dismissed, and as well as not being aware of the true situation, including the lightning strike, which has been noted in multiple testimonies, and also the fact that Mr. Rush had seen a cross-section of that hull with all of its defects, and, according to Mr. Stanley, displayed the actions of a man who had little confidence in the hull. This leads Mr. Stanley down a path towards the end, where he notes that this should be treated as a crime, that his life was put at serious risk by Ocean Gate, and once again, regarding Stockton Rush, that more than anything, his own name and legacy were what he truly cared about. And on a final note about that email chain, we also heard from Ocean Gate's representative that this is not the full, complete email chain, which is something they themselves have. So I'm not sure if we'll actually ever get to see that full chain, if this is in fact not it, but that, of course, would be highly of interest. In covering these testimonies, I've never seen the room so animated, with interjections from the Coast Guards and objections from Ocean Gate's counsel. At certain points, I truly had no idea where things were going to next, and it had me gripped throughout. I don't want to keep going on about Mr. Stanley's evaluation of Stockton Rush, but I do think it's pretty integral, as we know what a large part Mr. Rush played in Ocean Gate's operations and the power that he had. It has certainly been a trend throughout these testimonies, as some viewers of mine have also commented on past videos, that there is a clear divide in opinion between those who left the company and those who were still present when the tragedy happened, and their differing descriptions of Stockton Rush. And this testimony has only been further proof of that. In attempting to present this Ocean Gate coverage in more of an informative way rather than opinion-based, the desire to consider all angles is always there, but when it comes to Stockton Rush, there has just been so much said and so much evidence shown that, when even now we are still finding out more about his methods, it has come to a point where, when something new is brought to the table regarding negligence or bullying on his part, it barely comes as a surprise anymore. But anyway, that concludes the testimony of Cal Stanley, and while I do wish I could cover his own story more, I don't want to detract or move too far away from Ocean Gate in these videos, but again, it could possibly make for a future video. Regardless of his own operation, though, I think his words about his experiences with Ocean Gate are still valid, and the details he gave, such as Mr. Rush passing around the controls for the sub, and also the conversations they both had, are not ones that would need to be fabricated, as Mr. Stanley's reservations are plain to see in that email chain. And I think it added a lot, too, hearing from someone who actually dove in the Bahamas, as firsthand accounts often produce these otherwise lost details. But anyway, thank you very much for clicking on this video. It is greatly appreciated, and I'll be back again soon with the next one. So, until then, bye for now.